Obviously, don't have double standards. So with that, I give it back to the council.
Questions, Dan, from the council?
So, I got a statement and a question.
Yes.
The statement is you did a great job and you've really broke your back on this thing. And I commend you for that.
Thank you.
The second, the question, two questions, really. I, I'm confused on why we have to rush this through so quickly still, okay? And I just, I am. This thing, this document is about three hundred times more than we just went over. Maybe even more than that. Uh, I mean, it's a big fat document. I don't remember limiting bed and breakfast to five units at all in our meetings. I don't remember that ever happening. Maybe I was off somewhere.
Yeah, no, yeah, it could have been one of the meetings that you weren't at.
There wasn't that many of those.
No, there wasn't. But, yeah. But there were the, because one of the things that in-
Do you remember that?
I remember the discussion, Dan.
Of limiting bed and breakfast to five, to five rooms? Five units within a bed and breakfast?
That's only in a single family. That was only in single-family zoning.
I understand that, but that's where most of them are.
The existing is you need a special use permit, period.
Right.
This would allow up to five units by right without going through a special use permit, and then six or more would require, I mean, yeah, would then require the special use permit. If the council feels that-
No, I was just serious, I don't remember that. That's what I say.
Yeah.
That's what leads me to the question now, why we have to push this? Because I was in the meetings and I don't remember that.
Yes.
So, what I'm understanding you to say is that it wasn't limiting bed and breakfast to five units, but that was the threshold and after, if they go above five, they have to come in first.
Yeah, because again, currently by code, in an R1, you need a special use permit, period, for a bed and breakfast, whether, you know, it's one or two rooms or whatever.
And now we're saying the threshold would be five, if this were passed.
Right, right, in a single family, right. And then beyond that, it would require a special use permit.
And that's probably enough, I mean, I don't know, I'm ignorant to that side of the, to the bed and breakfast business, I guess. Uh, I don't know if that's standard, if that's something that they all, you know-
Yeah, I mean, it, when it comes to, yeah, when it comes to those type of uses, because most cities now put it under short-term rentals, whether it's Airbnb, anything like that. So it, it, it's like everything, it varies per community on what they feel comfortable with, what they want. I've seen some where they don't regulate it at all. There are some that, just like ours, where it's a special use permit, period, and there's some in between, so it's really the comfort level of, of, you know, the community, the council, on what they feel is appropriate. And again, we're talking within a single-family area.
I have some questions. And first of all, thank you, Dan, for, I know this was a massive undertaking, so thank you for all of your work on that. You had mentioned, um, on seven thousand square foot lots-
Mm-hmm.
That two units would be allowed by right.
Mm-hmm.
So that, so, just to clarify, that is not on the three unit, three, thirty-five hundred square foot lots?
No, uh, thirty-five hundred square foot lot would be limited to one unit, period.
Okay. But they would be allowed an accessory dwelling unit?
No, no, not on the thirty-five, you have to have a minimum of seven thousand.
Okay, for two units.
Yep.
Okay, and that is not in the original town site, correct?
No, that is within the-
Do we have seven thousand square foot lots in the original?
Yeah, because that's, and that was one of the other issues that we had, is the typical lot that's been combined, because again, the original lots were twenty-five by one forty, which is thirty-five hundred square feet. Most people combined them into a seven thousand square foot lot. Our code currently says, in order to have a duplex, you need an eight thousand square foot lot. So even if we go and rezone a seven thousand square foot lot, they can't have a duplex. And, you know, that thousand square foot makes no difference whatsoever. So that was one of the other things that changed, is it put it in, uh, to what we typically see within our original town site, which is either the thirty-five hundred or the seven thousand.
Okay. Um, and then I had a question about the commercial.
Mm-hmm.
You said that there were provisions put in there that would allow for regulation of residential in commercial? Is that allowing new residential, or is that just regulating the current residential?
No, it's currently allowed. Our, our current code allows, and, and what our code says is you can have residential within a commercial area, but it has to be one or the other. We don't have a mixed use. So if you do residential, all the residential stuff applies, you know, setbacks, uses, you know, lot coverage, accessory, um, units, that whole thing. If you want to use it as commercial, then the residential has to go away and you can use it as commercial, uh, in that. And there's a couple provisions in there, as I said, that would kind of allow for that micro-mixed use to happen now. Because we even have a lot of properties south of town that are like two acres, and they're zoned commercial, but they're being used as residential. With the accessory commercial units, they could put a small commercial, um, building on there and, you know, be able to better utilize that property.
Okay, so, this would allow someone to put a residential into the commercial area?
Yeah.
Like new construction?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but again, because one example I give is Mission Hills. It's actually Zone C2. But it, it was platted and it was approved as a single-family subdivision. So somebody cannot go in there, tear a house down, and put in a, um, put in a, um, a commercial business type of thing, because it's a single-family subdivision. Most of the lots that are, um, for commercial are in and around the downtown. That's where that provision or the original townsite area, where you can have, again, an existing home with commercial turned in, or I mean, residential that's zoned commercial to do that. You can't do it in Mission Hills, even with the new code, yeah.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then with the medical marijuana?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I know at the state level, we've added more regulations over the past several years, and I don't really even know what those are exactly. Does this code, like, is it, is it baseline with state regs? Or is it stricter than state regs, or have, or is it-
No, it would be baseline with the state, uh, in that. The, the thousands, uh, foot provision is currently in state law, we just put it in ours as well, uh, in that. But there are, if you, under that section, it does say that, you know, any state law is still applicable in that. So anytime the state changes that, they would have to comply with it and we would make sure, uh, that they are, but it is not more strict. We had talked about maybe limiting, um, the distance between different dispensaries and all that, and in the end, it was decided, we just want to make sure it doesn't get around, uh, you know, schools or daycares or that type of thing.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and that's what the state requirements are.
Right, that's currently, yes.
So that's just following that.
Yeah, because some communities have put in provisions that limit the number of, like, dispensaries you can have within a certain distance, where they have to be separated by a thousand or two thousand feet, something like that.
Okay, alright. Any other questions, council?
I have something to say. Having attended every single meeting, I don't remember everything discussed. I have a folder I can refer to, probably would still have to ask questions based on everything we talked about over time. I am impressed now and was impressed then, that I can ask you anything and you're right there. You, you could go to the page and point it out. I'm thoroughly impressed with that. The fact that you think we need to drag it out here further, Brian, I don't, who are we trying to appease? Or who doesn't, who, who's unin, who do you feel is uninformed that we need to inform?
I didn't say we need to drag it out further.
Yeah, you did.
No, what I said is I think, I think-
We're rushing into it, what does that mean?
Well, we kind of are. I mean, this is a, this is about a five hundred-page document.
Okay, so are we going to do this every council meeting? Are we going to go through different pages like we already did for the last five months? What do we need to do? We need to print a copy, make it accessible to whoever's in question, or what are we going to do?
I already asked him to give all of council a red line that we have.
Okay.
So that they can go through the red line.
Yeah.
And all I'm saying is, is, alright, so is a twenty-minute meeting and planning enough to approve this? Because they did.
Well-
Okay, no, I'm not, I'm going to go there.
We're talking about this code.
We are talking about this code, but we're talking about, we're talking about-
Then you brought it up now, what do you want?
We're talking about seven people voting in a zoning code.
Okay.
Planning voted it in, in about a twenty-minute meeting.
That's why we had three council people at that.
I think every council person should be given the same presentation that I went through. I think everybody on planning should see what I did.
Then why didn't they all attend every meeting?
I didn't set it up, so I don't know.
Every single meeting, I would say.
Well, you can't, you can't, because it's-
And I'm the only one that can say that, I think.
It gets-
I was at all of them but one.
Oh, you're full of them.
No, I think, I think the plan is-
Are you saying I missed more than one meeting?
I'm pretty sure you did. But still, besides the point, who do we need to inform here to get this passed?
I think, well, here's what I'm saying.
Do we have a goal?
You asked a question, do you want an answer or not?
Yeah, give it to me.
Okay. My, the answer is, I think we just need a little more time for the people that weren't there to be able to go through this five hundred-page document.
Okay.
That you and I went through, over the course of eleven weeks or twelve weeks, whatever it was.
And, and the plan to bring it back is in two week, or three weeks, three weeks, actually.
Yeah, and, and hope, maybe this will answer Brian's question, or, uh, question. Once the planning commission had approved the, um, a recommended approval of it, I had sent that document as well as the red lines to all the council members. So that was March fourteenth. So like you said, you have April now twenty-second, so there'll be basically a whole month to be able to review, ask questions, concerns, or that. The same was provided to the planning commission. They had that, uh, actually even before the last meeting of the oversight committee, so they could make sure that if they had any questions, concerns, or had ample time to read it over and review it, so it wasn't just thrown at them at a meeting and then you expected a decision in, you know, fifteen minutes.
So that's something that I wasn't aware that they had the red line.
Yes.
I know that in those meetings, I've asked a lot of questions. I didn't see very many questions coming from down there.
No, because I understood-
You just went with Dan whenever he was due. I get, okay?
I, I think that, um, I, I think that, that we have been given, all, ultimately, almost a month, council members, uh, to look at a document. I think the other thing that, that we shouldn't lose in this, uh, is that it's not, it's not casting concrete. There are opportunities along the way to make amendments to what we are, to this amendment project. And I, I would hope, I would hope that ten years from now, we're not looking at something, uh, a, a new rezoning for the first time in ten years. I would, this is a dynamic process. This is a din- dynamic time that we're in, in housing and in zoning, in our, in our community. So I don't, I don't know that this is, is going to be, it shouldn't be, the last time that we, as a council, visited. We have the opportunity to amend. I think we have had thirty days. Uh, I, I can tell you that I have not read every single page. I've, I've looked through most of it. Uh, I, I, I salute you and the team representing our council and the team representing our community, uh, for, for meeting eleven times or whatever it was, uh, to go through this. I think it's a, I, I think it's a huge step forward. Uh, I think it's, uh, it, it, it's a wonderful document for our community. But, it's not the end-all, be-all. There are, and there are opportunities to amend.
Yeah, and if I may, Mayor, that is a-
And that's the first thing I did, was commend you for your work on, on this document. Because it is, you did do a great job on it, no question. I just want to make sure, Tracy, that if other council people have questions, that they have ample time to go through the document and ask the questions, that's all.
Well, I, I think we've got three weeks, we've got three more weeks.
One of the concerns that I have is that we just had a city election today, and I, I've checked the results, and by an overwhelming majority, we'll have a new city council member joining. When Mayor Robb has to resign his seat to take the mayor's position, there will be another city council member. I mean, I, I think that, I, I think you did a great job, Dan. But I do think that this is a document that, uh, ultimately i- is a reflection of where we want to head as a city. I mean, a, a, a code like this is, is a, is a reflection of where we are going to go as a city. And, and I love most of the stuff you've done, because I think that affordable housing, I, I don't think there's anybody that's been a bigger proponent of affordable housing than I have. I, I mean, and you were there when, when we brought Positively Paseo to Guthrie to, to build affordable housing, right? But we do have two council members, and I think that is something that we need to consider, that will be taking, that will be taking, uh, office in, in May, um, as a new mayor.
Which I, I think that that is an important consideration, because obviously, like, all of us up here, we've had time, and those two council members are just going to walk into the middle of literally everything, even beyond just this zoning code, and have to, like, pick it all up and figure it out. So I think that that would be really overwhelming to them, and I think it's important for us to take care of this and put it into place, so that they don't inherit this mountain of things.
Yeah, Dan, I understand everything you've written in the code, I don't have any issues. I'm just worried that other people who were not in those meetings, which you did a really good job at presenting that to us, them just being given the five hundred-page red, I'm just throwing out the number, but the red line, they won't have the teacher in the room to answer certain questions in the manner that we did.
And I, I appreciate that. It, I think the red line version is about two hundred pages.
Okay, well, he said five hundred, so I was just throwing that-
But, but, I do, I do appreciate Dan getting that to us as soon as he could, because I have started reading through that, every word of it, and I'm making a whole list of questions, and I've asked some questions tonight, but I fully intend to sit down with Dan and go through all of my questions and concerns before we vote on this. So, I, I feel like, as someone who has not been in these meetings, if it helps you guys, and I appreciate your concern, I feel like I have ample time to ask my questions, bring up my concerns, and have those addressed before we vote on it.
And the person that's, uh, elected to, tonight, uh, it's possible to give that person, I think it would be a possible, to give that person this draft, so that, uh, so that that could be reviewed. So that really leaves the one new person out of the, out of the mix of, of seven. The new person that would be replacing you. And, uh, you know, again, I don't know if there's going to be a perfect document that's presented.
That, that's, you know, my thoughts, uh, on it. And, and you brought up a very good point, Mayor, and, and I think that's very important, is a zoning code should be reviewed in, you know, a pretty heavy entirety, at least every five years, uh, in that. But as you indicated, just like we've seen with the current code, we'll see with this code and later on, you know, things change in our society, in our cities, and there's no way you can write a code now that is still going to be relevant ten, fifteen years down the road, uh, in that. And so it's keeping up on it in that. And we are probably going to have things come across, but we can address them. We can have amendments like we've seen in, again, with the existing code that we have here and there. One of the things I did share with the mayor today and, and that, just throwing it out there, I've talked to a lot of people in the community, uh, about the code, about the changes. There's a lot of them out there that are eagerly anticipating this code, because it's going to open up a lot of opportunities, especially in the housing end. But there wasn't one person that thought that this was crazy, out of line, or what. They actually said, "Thank you, I'm glad that the city is looking towards these type of issues and that." So, uh, you know, there may not be people here today, but I can tell you, there's a large part of the community that is very supportive of this and is looking forward to it and what it'll allow for us in the future.
Just for clarification, when are we, Eddie, when are we going to vote on it, then?
April twenty-second.
Just for-
Be your next meeting, assuming the council would, would like to vote on it at that time.
Yeah.
And I must say, I, I'm not pressing for even that date. And I take, I admit, I wasn't thinking about the two council persons coming on. And since the council's going to vote on it, they should be aware once and, I agree a hundred percent. I'm just trying to find out who, like you said, people in the public or in the business sector that are looking forward to. My point is, who out there is not aware that needs to be aware? And how do we get to there? That's all I'm saying. Whether that's past the twenty-second, fine, I don't care. But let's decide when that's going to be and how we're going to go about it.
Yeah, I don't think we wait till the end of the year, that's not where I was going with it.
Well, I didn't, I didn't think you did.
No, I thi, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of what's in this.
My mind was, who's not aware, who's not informed enough to make a decision?
Well, Maneka-
I know, I wasn't thinking about those two, I already said that. I wasn't thinking about those two coming on, because we've been doing this for months, so.
But we can certainly solve one of those two.
Sure.
We can certainly solve one of those, those, those two. This opportunity, as people view this, may generate some more, some more in, in interest and engagement and questions. And I would suggest that, Dan, if you do get, uh, a lot of questions, then I think it's incumbent upon you to say, "Hey, maybe we need to step back for another, um, a couple, two weeks or whatever, beyond the twenty-second, beyond our next, uh, city council meeting, uh, to, to re, to reevaluate these questions that come up." I'm just thinking that we, we can't continue to kick a can hoping that we get a, a perfect product, because it's not going to happen.
But Councilwoman Mills had a legit point, too, in that, you know, do we overwhelm and overstimulate a new council person coming in, you know?
Well, and-
It's a big document. It is a big document.
The two candidates on the ballot today could easily have come tonight and listened to this whole presentation. They could have come to the planning commission and listened to the same presentation, like, the, all of the public could have come tonight, that's what this is for.
Yeah.
So anyone can be informed if they choose to, it's all there.
Valid, valid comment.
Is there a particular reason why it can't be till the second meeting in May? I'm not advocating for that, I'm just asking, like, it's, just asking.
Not from a staff perspective.
I mean, is there, my whole thing is, is there, is there builders that are-
Yes.
Ready and waiting on this so that they can start, like a little mini-community? And they're waiting on us to approve it for it, because that's a whole different-
No, there are some, I, yeah, and, and I'm, you know, I, I get calls. In fact, there's a, uh, woman in Silver Alley area that's looking to build an accessory dwelling unit for her aging, I think her mother, uh, in that. And just recently, like I said, I've gotten a few calls, I don't remember offhand, but there are some that definitely calls, give me calls on a fairly regular basis, asking where the code is.
Yeah. Well, you know.
Yeah, I'm not just, man, I'm not discounting the dwelling thing, but is there, is the prolonging of this decision hindering business investment at this time?
I can't say with absolute certainty, but I could say, yes, it could be.
So potentially, yes.
It's general for anything that we pass in any capacity.
Potentially, yes, and again, this isn't something that's cast in concrete. If there's, if there's a need to amend it, there's, there's opportunity to do that.
From my perspective only, from being in the meetings, I have no changes that I, I need or want to make.
Right.
Uh, I'm good with the final document.
You did a good job, you contributed some that were changed because of your questions and observances. That's what that was all about, so I commend you for that.
I appreciate that. And so I just want to make sure that everybody else has the same fair opportunity, that's all. I'm just an opportunist in that, in that respect.
Okay, um, I'm sorry.
I just said, I think, I think we do.
Okay, well, um, we're going to move on. We have a, uh, opportunity, uh, obviously, when it comes to vote, if you decide, if you think that it, that it needs to be more time than the next city council meeting, that will show up when you vote. But, uh, if we can make sure that the newest person, uh, can get a, a draft of it-
First thing in the morning.
-so that she can review it.
But we, we don't know who will, we don't know who will replace-
No, that's one out of seven.
Right.
Well, we won't have that person for some time. That, you know, that, that's not going to be till probably June or July.
That's up to the council, that's up to the council.
Yes, I understand.
But, uh, I, I, I don't want to beat this, this horse to death, folks. Uh, I think we have opportunity to vote. If you don't, if you think that it needs more time, uh, than in our city council meeting, that's how you can vote. But, uh, I don't, I'm not seeing that we're gaining a whole lot of, of, uh, new information here. So, I'd like to move on. Again, uh, join with, with others here, congratulations, Dan, on, on leading this. Congratulations on, uh, the, the, those that represented the council. I really, really appreciate that. And obviously, congratulations to those, uh, citizens that represented, uh, the community. A great, great effort, uh, for a document that impacts, impacts our community for a long time. Thank you.
So we can fan a round of applause.
No, I don't need one.
Now, don't get shy on this, Dan.
And that, that I will say is probably the last time you'll get a, uh, an applause for a thirty-five-minute presentation.
Right, I cut it down from an hour and a half.
You did, yeah, and you did, and you did, you did really well. Thank you very much, Dan, appreciate you very much. Uh, item number seven, you might as well stay right there.
Yes.
A request for a special permit at fourteen twenty-four West Warner Avenue. Please educate, educate us as to what this is all about.
Thank you, Mayor.
Have you seen pictures?
Yes, as, as- This special use permit is for a, um, carport in the front of the house. There's a house that has an existing one-car garage, they're looking to put it, uh, in front of it. It's the flat roof with the typical, if you want to say, uh, columns, uh, on there. It's similar to what we've approved, uh, most recently in the, um, original townsite area. The planning commission had recommended approval for, oh, uh, the carport. They found it compatible with the neighborhood, so with that, give it back to the council.
Okay.
Anybody complaining?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to prove it.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion, questions? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move forward with the special use permit at fourteen twenty-four West Warner Avenue. Uh, item number eight, ordinance number thirty-four twenty-one, request to rezone in the five hundred block of South Academy Road, Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this property is located across the street from the, uh, Guthrie Job Corps on that portion of Academy, and just to the south of it, there's a existing duplex development. I forgot what it's called.
Cottage.
Cottage something, yeah. So it's right in, uh, that area, it's a four-point-four acre parcel. It's currently zoned A2, they're looking to go to R2, uh, because they want to do a similar, multi-family development as there is to the south. The only person that commented at the public hearing was the neighbors who sold the property, knowing it was going to be developed, but they were concerned with their tree on the south side, because technically, there could be an entrance there. The developer talked with the, um, with the, with those people, and they're going to have the entrance to the north, and it isn't going to affect everything, so at that point, everybody was happy. Uh, the planning commission recommended unanimously, uh, to approve the rezone from A1 to R2.
And you didn't get any negative letters?
Yeah, there was no other calls or letters or anything, uh, regarding the rezone.
So moved.
I have a question.
Yep.
Do you know how many units are planned for this?
Not at this point. There, as I put in my staff report, there's obviously some limitations in there, given how many you can have, uh, parking and that. As I said, I would guess that there probably at a max would be forty-five units that could be put on that parcel, uh, in that. But at this point, he hasn't submitted any specific plans.
Okay, and did you say in here that those were potentially duplexes?
Yeah, he's looking at duplexes, yeah. So there would be forty-five units, but about twenty structures.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I believe we had a motion.
Yep.
You have a second?
I'll say that.
You have a motion in a second? Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote, sir.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then for ordinance number three-two-two-one, uh, in the, um, rezoning of the five hundred block of South Academy. Item number nine, city manager report.
Yes, Mayor, council, this evening, I have no report for you, but I will get it out to you by the end of the week.
What? Good deal.
All right, all right. Uh, item number ten, comments from city council, uh, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would, uh, like to congratulate you on the, the, the recognition you got today. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I would like to thank both of the people who ran for city council, all, actually, all four of the people that ran for city council. And I, I think that's a testament to, to the quality of, of people that we have in the community that want to serve, and, um, congratulations to Mrs. Gibbs for, for winning that election. That's all I have.
Councilman Williams?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Buthroyd?
Uh, just again, to Dan and staff for, uh, doing a good job. That's it for me.
Councilman Robb?
Congratulations, Mayor, on your award today. You look great in your outfit, you should have wore it more often.
Yeah. Yeah.
Every, every, every meeting.
They don't usually call this an outfit.
Sorry.
It, it, it is a uniform.
I have a, I have a legitimate excuse for this, I'm a movie maker. So anytime there's a police or anything like that, it's always an outfit, cuz my, my mistake, you're correct, uniform, sorry, my producer brain there. Uh, but congratulations on that.
Thank you very much.
Um, I would like to second what Vice Mayor Gary said, thank you for everyone who put their name in the race and got out there and ran, I know what that's like, uh, we appreciate it. And congratulations to Minnaka Gibbs, I don't think it's official yet, it still has to go through the E Logan County election, but, uh, as of right now, she is the councilwoman elect, so congratulations to her. Uh, Dan, once again, thank you for putting all the work you did into this, I know this was months, maybe, heck, I don't know, maybe years for you to put that together and your staff, uh, so thank you. The Renaissance, Renaissance Festival happened last weekend, had about 10,000 attendees, um, so I'd like to thank John Pagonas and his entire team for putting that on, it was great, I went all weekend with my kids, appreciate that. Um, yeah, so other than that, uh, that's all I got, thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Mills?
Yes, I'm excited for 89ers coming up, that's always a huge thing for our town, so I appreciate everybody who puts in the work to make that happen, I realize that's a big undertaking. Um, but hopefully we'll have big crowds this year and lots of fun festivities. Also, I'm super excited about Guthrie Day, the Capitol coming up next Thursday, um, the 10th. Hope that everyone will come to the Capitol for that and show off our town to all of our legislators and staffers and the public, so, that's all.
That's really important and I believe this is the first-
That's correct.
-first one that we've had.
This will be the inaugural event, um, hosted by the Guthrie Chamber, so we were able to partner with, um, Brittany Timmons, President and CEO of the Chamber, and we look forward to that event.
A great, a great opportunity to, uh, to visit with legislators and, uh, and reflect on the, uh, on the greatness of Guthrie. Yep, for sure. Um, Councilman Taylor?
Staff, thank you. Justin, it was good to see you today down at the Capitol, it was a fun time down there, I know Katie was down there as well, she got to see you and the mayor, and I didn't get to see the mayor, but, uh, anyway, it was great, uh, I appreciate what everybody's done. Dan, we've been on this for what, two years, two and a half years, I think?
Five.
Five, okay.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute. It's been a while.
So that- I don't think it's five years.
No, it's been, it's-
That was from the very inception of starting the event.
Okay.
It's been about three years since we kind of fell off.
35 minutes, that's gotta be a record for you.
What's that?
89ers is coming up, guys, so, uh, we've got that coming up, there'll be a picture with the governor on the 15th and, and of course, like I said, Guthrie Day's coming up. Congrats, Mayor, I-
Thank you, thank you.
Other than that, that's it.
Okay, um, we've been through a tough time as a community, uh, as a county, as a, as a state, as it relates to, uh, our, our fort, the fires, wildfires. Uh, our, our first responders, uh, firemen, uh, police, uh, again, did a spectacular job, uh, in very, very difficult circumstances and, and, uh, you know, sometimes, sometimes we forget about them until they're needed, we need to remember them every day, every single day, because they do, uh, a spectacular job in keeping us all safe, uh, whatever that, uh, whatever the circumstance is. So, we are blessed to have those professionals, um, um, in our, in our community, in our administration. A couple different things, I let, I, I unfortunately let this pass, um, uh, two weeks ago, uh, National Vietnam Veterans Day was March 29th, uh, and, uh, was proclaimed by, uh, President Trump ba- back in 17, 2017, uh, to recognize, uh, Vietnam, Vietnam-era veterans, uh, and, and welcome them home, which some of them didn't have the opportunity when they did come home. Uh, so, I want to, I want to make a special, on behalf of the city, the council, uh, special thank you to the Vietnam veterans out there, uh, in our community, of which there are, are sep, are, are a lot, there's six to seven million Vietnam veterans that are living in our country today, uh, and, uh, and we owe them a lot.